All right, Anthony, thank you. Test. Welcome, everybody, those that are here tonight. Welcome to those that are on the Zoom. And my name is William Roche. I'm the chairperson of the City of Morro Bay Planning Commission. And really happy to have everybody here. Let me welcome you to a regular scheduled meeting Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, Veterans Memorial Building. And I'd like to introduce our commissioners. If I could start with Vice Chair Mike Rodriguez, Commissioner Joseph Ingraffia, and Commissioner Eric Meyer. One of our commissioners will not be with us tonight, Asia King. And so I have established a quorum. And if I could, could we have a moment of silence, please? Thank you all. And pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite,
Next is planning commissioner announcements. And I do have one announcement. We have our newest commissioner who was born a few days ago. So Asia had a baby boy. And so congratulations to Asia. That's why she's not here tonight. But I think we're all very happy for her. And everybody's happy and healthy, including Dad. We are. So I wanted to put that under planning commissioner announcements. Any other announcements? You have one?
Yeah, Chair Roche. I did have an opportunity to meet with Councilmember Landrum tonight for meet and greet. So this is the first time ever met with her in person. So very good meeting. Thank you.
Thanks for letting us know. With that, I want to open public comment. This is the time that if you have something to talk about other than what's on the agenda, or if you don't want to stay, you can speak now. So anyone who's interested, please welcome Bill.
Good evening, Bill Martini and Morro Bay. I wanted to mainly, this is just a couple of comments and an update. And it has to do with Nadine and Little Red House. I was wondering if there's any update on, at one time I heard the Historical Society was trying to move it north. Of course, my interest at the time was to try and keep its integrity in a two-story as opposed to they were going to take it apart. But if that's still in the progress or works in the permitting process, and that's kind of one. And then the other comment was I noticed that an RFP went out from the Harbor Department on two lease sites on the south end of the Embarcadero. A lot of people know it was like Reggie's house. This is just south of, like, Pacific, associated Pacific. They're two little mid-century residences or, you know, little cottages. And the RFP, the way I understand it, and this will, if it moves forward, is for redeveloping those two sites. And I was just wondering if we, you know, if there might be a better approach as far as trying to repurpose them as opposed to, you know, dozing them and doing another, you know, kind of modern structure there. And so one of the thoughts was even the Harbor Department at one time was looking to expand. They were talking about spending up to $3 million on their place. And maybe they could use a little annex at that end, you know, and kind of. But the main thing is what I was thinking is the thought as far as trying to save those structures or remodel them or find some purpose for them rather than tearing them down and doing another big development. And just wanted to kind of put that out into the psyche and the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Scott, do you have any, offer any information to Bill?
Thank you, Chair Roche. Don't have any update at the moment related to the, related to that, related to the Little Red House. They haven't come back in for their building permits yet. So we don't have a resolution to the Little Red House piece. Yeah, as for the, like, like Bill, Mr. Martini indicated, we did go out for RFP for those two lease sites down at the end. That's the city's practice for when these sites come up and they're ready for redevelopment. We go through that process.
Thank you very much.
I had a similar question on the same subject as long as he's.
Go ahead and ask.
I'm just curious, for the sake of the public awareness, when, when those sites become available, just can you briefly explain that process of what, what happens? And how a, a member of the public who might be interested in those parcels would come forward to the city with a proposal, just, you know, the five-second version?
Yeah, so in some instances, we have, we have leaseholders that are interested in doing redevelopment of their sites, and they hold the sites. And so we would give deference to those types of situations. And they would come in through a consent of landowner process whereby they would come up with a, with a draft design, potentially even come before the planning commission to show it to you. And then we would negotiate through the city council process to move them forward if that was the desire of the city council. And we'd enter into a consent of landowner process. And eventually, if they went through the planning process and obtained their coastal development permits and conditional use permits, then we would enter into a lease with them, a long-term lease based on the amount of investment in the site. When we don't have a leaseholder that desires to move forward with a project, and which is the instance for these two lease sites, they're small at the south end of the Embarcadero, then we will RFP those and send them out for an RFP to see if we can get interest in redevelopment of that, either through folks from the outside or maybe even some of the adjacent leaseholders that are there. And so we'll see what happens. We're, we're hopeful and optimistic that we're going to get something interesting that comes forward.
Where do you publish that RFP?
It's published on the city's website. I'm not sure what other formats or locations that was published at. I'd have to ask the Harbor Director. He's the one in charge of the RFP for the lease sites down on the waterfront. Not sure if he placed it elsewhere. I know our site is mined by folks, you know, related to RFPs. And even, even for, you know, like, we have new jobs available in the city or whatnot. They go to get mined by, like, Indeed and Monstern, those types of folks. So similar for our, for our RFPs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Others, Betty, you don't want to talk? I would like to recognize Susan Stewart, who's in the off, in the room tonight, our ex-chair. Nice to see you. Thanks for coming. Any, Anthony, anybody in the queue?
Thank you, Chair Roche. Currently, I do see one hand raised in the queue. Terry Simons, I'm going ahead to unmute you. Terry Simons.
Terry, welcome.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can.
And you see me?
No.
Probably just as well. I couldn't join you this evening. I'm under doctor's orders to stay away from all public contact with planning commissioners and staff for duration. And until that order is lifted, I'm going to continue to watch and participate via Zoom. I did want to say, I'm not going to stay for the whole meeting. There was not a lot for me to comment on, which seems rare. But it looks like we're operating under a new staff format for evaluating projects. I noticed both of the residential projects seem to have a new format. And it looks like it's basically designed to follow the objective analysis approach that's been under discussion. So I'd like to hear something back from staff on that. Otherwise, have a great meeting.
Terry, thank you. We wouldn't have had a quorum if you hadn't called in, so thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other hands, Anthony? Are we good?
I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll close the public comment period. Consent calendar. Two items there. I was not at the May 16th meeting, so I will recuse. Do we have any comments or motions regarding the minutes?
Yeah, since I was the acting chair or vice chair. So I did notice one little thing on the minutes under a, on the motion. It says chairperson Meyer moved. It should be Commissioner Meyer moved. When it said chairperson, I said, Bill wasn't here. So how could it be? So I was the acting vice chair. So I think we just need to change chairperson to chair commissioner Meyer. So other than that, the minutes look good. So I'll motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Second?
Second, as amended.
Any comments? Would you call for a vote, please?
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes, approve.
Vice Chairperson Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
And you're abstaining, Chair?
I'm abstaining.
So motion passes three, one, three, zero, one.
Thank you very much. With that, we can go right to our first case. I'd like to call case number CUP 23-06. This is at 646 Sequoia Court, Morro Bay. Nancy, I think this is yours.
It is? All right, this is an application for a conditional use permit, CUP 23-06, for a new single-family home and a JADU at 646 Sequoia Court. There we go. It's a large site. It's just outside of the coastal zone. So this is rare for us. We don't see these very often. And because of that, it's under the current 2022 zoning code. So it's a vacant site. It's just under a half acre. It's a sloping terrain. And as I mentioned, it's outside of the coastal zone, which is why we have a conditional use permit. The site required a biologic site study, and that was performed by JBD Environmental Consulting Group. They did a report for this site and the adjacent site, both which were reviewed in 21, 2021 and 2022 for homes under the old zoning code. The process under the old zoning code was administrative approval. But they shared environmental consultants. They reviewed the site and said no specific habitat or plant species would be affected by the development. And the project is conditioned to preserve and restore native plant species in the non-irrigated areas. It also required a soils engineering study because of the slope of the site. And GeoSolutions prepared a report January 3rd, 2022, and reviewed the site's surface and subsurface conditions. And the project is conditioned to follow the development recommendations of the study related to grading, foundation, retaining wall, and drainage. Summary of the proposed project. It is 4,941 square feet of living space, including a 320-square-foot JADU and a 1,493-square-foot garage storage area. So you can see from the site drawing, Sequoia Court is at the bottom. And there's a winding driveway that goes up to the house. And then the house is sitting kind of in the center of the lot. The basement garage level is shown here in white with parking for three cars. They can have any color car they want. I've chosen, I guess, the flag colors. The blue area is crawl space and foundation. And at this level, the crawl space is very minimal. And the majority of that is a foundation for the upper levels. The lower living level, which is right above the garage, is shown here. And again, the blue area is crawl space and foundation. A little more of it is crawl space here. It's 1,577 square feet of conditioned space. This level includes the 320-square-foot JADU. And it also has three other bedrooms and three bathrooms. The upper living level is shown here, and it's 3,364 square feet of conditioned space. It's two outdoor spaces, kitchen, dining, living room, open area, entry, laundry, and the master bedroom suite. This is the landscape plan. This shows you in green is 1,500 square feet of irrigated landscape area and about 13,000 square feet of native, non-irrigated land. This is a project building section that shows you the foundation support crawl space area on the lower left. And then the garage level, subterranean, lower level, subterranean. And the upper level is primarily not subterranean. It's mostly exposed. The RL Zone Development Standards are shown here. The center is the standard, and on the right is the proposed. And you can see they meet or exceed. For example, the front setback here is 78 feet versus 20, which is required. They meet the side yard setback. The rear setback is also large, 85 feet versus 20 required. They are under the height by almost three feet. And lot coverage is 16%. They have a three-car garage instead of a two-car garage. Material board is shown here in the larger image on the bottom. That shows kind of a view from the front without the adjacent land. And the colors are muted and neutrals, wood, metal, stone. And then the two images at the top are the house that was approved in 2022, which was slightly smaller than this, but basically the same footprint, the same access, which had significant review by the building department and the fire department because of the slope. And is three levels with also three-car garage. So when this application came in, they just really wanted to add a little to it. And they wanted to change the exterior architectural design from what it was to a more modern look. So they just got caught up in the, or they had the privilege of being under the new zoning code, which required a discretionary review. Design guidelines. This image is a little small, but this shows you in the larger image on the lower right, the outline of the site is at the bottom. And this shows you the sizes and the locations of all the houses in the surrounding area, which are all pretty big lots. I mean, clearly, the ones on the east side of Sequoia Court are larger, but the other ones are also fairly large. The immediate home sizes on this exhibit show from 3,000 to 3,800. But we did hear from one of the homeowners in the area who has recently added on. So his is now 4,500. But from reviewing the design guidelines, given the home's placement on the parcel and the distance from the street and the other homes, it meets the proportional relationship related to mass and scale and does not have any privacy impacts on other homes. This concludes the presentation. And the staff recommendation is for approval of the conditional use permit, CUP 23-06 pursuant to the findings and conditions of approval included in the planning commission resolution 11-23. And the applicant and the designer are present.
Fantastic. Nancy, thank you very much. Any questions for staff? Eric?
Just one. And sorry, I didn't get a chance. I just caught this. On, on your conditions of approval under the fire department section, condition five talks about the fire access driveway slope. And it says, continue fire apparatus access road more than 16 feet in width from the driveway entry to the rear of the residence. Does that, does that occur? And if so, where is that?
I think that's maybe a mistake because they, they required access to the residence and then an extension of the driveway for a hammerhead turnaround at the top in front of the residence.
I see where it extends to the side. It's just what, what caught me was to the rear, and that's why I'm asking.
There is no access to the rear of it. That is a leftover condition from previous design, I think. Our, all the conversations that we've had, we've had numerous conversations with fires, that they're accepting of the, the design, given the ability to turn a fire truck around on the driveway.
Okay, so we can change that in a motion? Okay.
Other questions, commissioners? Joe?
And Nancy, because I know this has come up in some of the correspondence. Nancy, you're not aware of any geological or drainage testing or report that needs to be made, that hasn't been made by the applicants? There is?
Not related to this site.
Yeah.
I just have one question. So my phone says I was out there 3:14 today, so I'll trust it. But I saw another sign. So I do recognize the one sign that's there. It looks like a for sale sign. But I saw a new sign with a green sign saying, you know, a Realtor had a sign out there. So are there two additional properties for sale?
There's, well, this one is, is owned, so it's not for sale now. The one next to it, so to the northeast, is the other home that has a plan that was approved administratively in 2022. And I believe that is also up for sale. And then there is another larger parcel that spans the natural drainage path that has been for sale for a long time. It's, it's a difficult-to-develop site.
Okay.
So there haven't been any proposed home plans for us to review. Nothing's been approved on that site.
Okay, yeah. And the only reason I ask is because I want to make sure that, you know, obviously, people, the Realtors are aware that this is happening. And they need to get the word out that there's going to be a new property and in the process of selling their, their lots or their homes. Okay, thank you.
So Nancy, I did have one question. We got many letters in support. We did get one letter questioning the drainage issues. Can you explain a little bit the history on that? And, and its context relative to this proposed site?
So the, the historical natural drainage path is two sites over from this to the north. This site is actually positioned so it will drain down Sequoia towards Ironwood. The, there is a manhole on both sides of the street that is, I, we don't have a pointer here, but it's, it's about halfway between the first bend and the end of the cul-de-sac. And that is a Public Works facility. And they have been working on trying to find a solution. It did flood at one time. It did some damage to one of the properties that are on the west side of the cul-de-sac.
And this flood was a year ago or roughly?
This was from the, this was from the January rains. The culvert failed. And so water washed. The pipe basically ended up with holes in it as well as the inlet.
Got it.
And it flooded down slope and eroded the area adjacent to the home that's across from the subject property and up one.
Got it.
And, and some repairs had to be made, I think, to the deck on that.
Do we know where, what progress Public Works has met, made, or where we are in the process?
They are actively working on the project. The good thing to note is that nothing that happens related to this project will affect it because this thing drains down slope and doesn't drain to that inlet.
Got it. So it's no impact?
No impact.
I did note that the street has been dug up immediately above where the location they're talking about. And there's plates in the street and so forth.
Commissioners, other questions for staff? No? Good. Let's move right to, we have a presentation from the applicant. Would they like to say anything? Present? You can just say hi if you'd like.
Yeah, I just, you know, came here, you know, my name is Amit, you know, been here in Morro Bay 15 years, own Harbor House since 2010 and worked a year before there. But yeah, I'm here to answer any questions or any concerns, you know. And adding to that point also, I did talk to the neighbor as well, the person who bring the signal to our attention. They are okay with everything with our house and stuff. But their concern was this particular, you know, I think she's more worried about that, you know, how soon the city can fix it.
Got it.
But we are, I'm on waiting list for her. Whenever she's available, I will be bringing, you know, I was about to bring this plan to them to see.
Great.
But that's about it.
Yeah, thank you so much. And you have your designer with you if we have questions, right?
Yes, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll go to public comment. Would anybody like to speak? Oh, good, Betty.
Betty Winholz. I did send you a late email with some of my concerns, and I'll just highlight some of them here because I think they're still relevant, and I don't know the answers to them. One is, let's talk, start with scale and mass. This will be the largest house in this cul-de-sac, and it will dominate the area. And I think it's important to know, even though this is residential ag, it's still, mass and scale is pretty large and not. And, and if you've been out there, you know that those four houses to the west all are street level, and then they drop. There's just the one house across the cul-de-sac that this one's kind of imitating in terms of the drive-up. And if you don't know, the original house was the Riddell House at the very top, which kind of dominates the whole hillside. I think my biggest concern is the soil and the runoff because I feel like this property is right between that landslide area to the north that has been so predominant on Panorama and Delmar Park. And, and then to the south, there's been at least two sewer issues that have run. As, as you know, that there was a pipe that was exposed in one of those areas. And over time, I know there was another house that almost slid on another house. So it seems to me that the importance of coming back with a new soil report from the geoengineering is critical, not just for the applicant himself, but for his neighbors. And which brings me to a point, when we talked about the drainage goes downhill, I thought the new rule was that your drainage had to stay on-site. I didn't think you could have runoff into the street. Is that true or false? So I'll ask that question. There, you know, when there's been other houses built on the hillsides in North Morro Bay, the grade has been given. There's no grade here. We don't know how steep this hillside is. And I think it's, you can know that. I think that's important for us to know. And how is the police department, not the police, the fire department going to reduce that grade? Because it appears to me to be over 15%. How they're going to lower that to the 15% grade? And then speaking of the fire department, in the past, they've really rejected multiple-point turns to get a, a machine, their truck, up and back and out. Maybe with the new fire chief, that's not of a big concern for him. But this is a multi-point turn to get his engine out of there. The other thing that's not in the report is the amount of cut and fill that's happening here. Again, in the past, we've known the quantity of tons that is, is, and, and this isn't listed at all in there other than to say that, you know, it shows that it goes up like this. And then my last question would be about trees. There may only be one tree that's in the way. But is there a requirement that you're going to have that it's a two-to-one replacement for whatever trees might be there?
Great. Betty, thank you so much. Scott, Nancy, can we try to answer a couple of those questions on the trees? Has there been a tree map done?
So there are, currently, there are no trees being removed for the house. It does look like there would be, but, but the images are aerials taken from the south looking north. So it's canopy.
Cut and fill, isn't that common that we review that?
Not at this stage, no. Engineering is during the building permit.
So that'll happen?
There is a topographic survey included in the plans. So the elevations are shown on the plans. And, and I did point out kind of the elevation differences between the street and the back of the house in the staff report.
So my experience is a little different than yours, that quite often, we do get the cut and fill in planning commission. But that's not the norm here?
I would say it's not typical unless there's some reason to provide it, since I've been here anyway. I've seen it done both ways. So I think that's probably what you're hearing. Perhaps the applicant has. Oh, okay.
Here, I'll just repeat what you said. We have civil plans that show the cut and fill. That came from the designer. That's good. The fire map, there is a fire map on there that shows the truck turning around. It looks very tight to me. But it's gone through fire?
They've spent months working that out. And actually, the, the house couldn't be designed until that was worked out.
Got it. Runoff?
That's Public Works. That's Public Works, and they have conditions to address drainage. And generally, sites try to detain before they runoff into the street.
There is, there is engineering on there showing the detention and showing how it runs through a little swell.
On the civil plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the project, you know, has conditions on there that if any change to the footprint, you know, comes about, then they have to.
Got it.
You have to, you know, relook at the drainage calculations to make sure that they're retaining what they're supposed to retain.
Got it. And there's a, the soils report, when was that completed? Because it's very thorough, the soils report.
2022, and I think that's a letter update to an earlier one. But certainly during the building permit process time, if the location of the house shifts or something changes and they think it needs to be updated, it'll be updated.
Yeah. I mean, there was trenching done and, you know, it was an extensive soils report, so. Final question that Betty had was the large scale. And when you compare the footprint, it's similar, but the square footage is big.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any question that this is a large home. The nice thing about it is it's on a slope, and they've cut it into the hillside. So and as I think you heard Nancy say, that it's like three foot below the maximum height because of that excavation. They need to do that excavation to make their driveways work. I mean, there's a lot of things, you know, going on there. I think this is probably one of the, one area in town or one of the few areas in town where you could have a house of this size designed in this manner, that it's not going to appear massive.
Yeah. And I would add that the architect has done a good job varying the setbacks. So, I mean, that will definitely help in terms of the massive read, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of articulation and a lot of step back of the main structure of the slope. It's nice.
Others, public comment? Anybody who'd like to speak? Anthony, do we have anybody in the queue?
Thank you, Chair Roshan. Currently, I see Terry Simons with his hand up.
Oh, good. Terry, hi.
Terry, you are unmuted.
Well, despite my earlier comment, I just can't help myself. I did want to counterpoint Betty as my, is my tradition. The building may appear massive on the drawings, but because, as the director pointed out, it's so laid into the hillside that I think it will actually be very diminished, relatively speaking, for a house this size. And as to cut and fill, I suspect there's going to be a mass quantity of material removed from the site in order to achieve the trenching in, if you will, of the house into the embankment to minimize its visual effect. I looked at it quite extensively, and I would discourage moving forward with any additional geosolution work. I looked at their initial report and their supplemental letter, and it's quite comprehensive. I've worked with geosolutions for decades, and they are very thorough. And this report is certainly up to their standards. So I think that the project is in good hands.
Thank you, Terry. Last chance, any public comment?
Oh, could I say one more thing?
Sure.
Eric Meyer brought up the question about the harbor commission's, or the harbor department's RFP for the Reg Wibley site. And there is a walkthrough meeting starting at the harbor commission at 10 o'clock on the 22nd. And that was in last week's city council agenda. But there's also a conflict in that agenda. It calls for both the 22nd and the 29th. I have verified that it is going to be, the walkthrough will start at 10 o'clock at the harbor office on the 22nd. There you go.
Thank you, Terry.
I just, I just have one more comment, only because I think.
We're going to go to comments in a second.
Oh, yeah.
So I think nobody's in the queue, nobody here, so I can close the public comment period, please? And now it's your turn.
Yeah. Yeah, and I just wanted to go back to the soils report because it was done in January 3rd of 2022. And, you know, we got all that rain. You know, Betty was just trying to, you know, come up with the fact that maybe it would be wise to do another report or soil study based upon the amount of rain we got. So, I mean, it saturated everything and may impact the soil somewhat. So I just thought I'd throw it out there. If I were the owner, I would, might consider that. So thank you.
Commissioners, comments, questions, motions? Joe?
I have a comment. While I myself personally might prefer a smaller house, I am impressed with the design. And I understand the applicant's need for it, and I don't see any legal constraints to the house's design. So I would certainly be in favor of the house. But my comment, and I realize this hasn't been agendized, but I do have a comment on the suitability of the junior accessory developed.
ADU, yeah.
Dwelling unit option to create one as an option versus the in lieu fees, which in this case for some $123,000. And it strikes me that while that option to build an accessory dwelling unit is well-intended, it's very, very unlikely to achieve its intent to providing additional housing that might be affordable or low cost. And so I'd like to agendize something in the future where we could talk about that specific provision of the Morro Bay law and perhaps, one, either eliminate that option or, two, provide some objective guidelines, if you will, with respect to the junior ADU so that it might actually be built in such a way as to provide some additional housing, perhaps in not having a communal hallway or a communal balcony or a distinctive, need for a distinctive front entryway or some other stuff that I can't even think of that maybe some of you can't, but.
Let's do it this way. We won't have a discussion here, but Scott, do you have any comments about agendizing this item?
I think you just add it as a future agenda item, and we'll bring it back.
And we'll bring it back.
Can I ask that you expand it to be multifamily as well, just not just junior ADU?
Make the thing at the end of the meeting for future agenda items, and I'll add whatever you want to do it.
We'll take it on then.
Yeah.
Other comments, questions, motions?
I would congratulate the applicant just because this is a very complicated site and a very difficult site. I think you've done a lot of work. I'm prepared to make the motion to approve with the little note about the fire department that we discussed earlier changing to whatever is actually appropriate. I think it's essentially on page 10, Fire Department Condition Number Five, currently states continued fire apparatus rode more than 16 feet in width from the driveway entry to the rear, but it should say from the driveway entry to the side perhaps, or something like that.
Maybe just to the residence, and we could delete the rear of, the rear of, delete that portion. Then it just has the driveway 16 feet wide to the residence.
Okay, so your motion is to approve staff's recommendation with that one comment?
Yep, as long as the fire department approves of that.
We have that, Nancy?
Yes.
And I'll second that and just comment as well that when I compare the plan that was put forward in 2022 and 2023, I'd like to just, again, compliment the applicant on, it's almost identical. It's just that they did an architectural upgrade, looks like, to better fit their needs. So I thought you did a really good job on that. Thank you.
Final comments, commissioners? Scott, would you pull the commission, please?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Graffia?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Chair Roshan?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Congratulations. Thanks for the really good submittal. With that, we will now go to B2. This is case number CDP 22-041 slash CUP 22-12. The site location is 2285 Emerald Circle in Morro Bay.
Gabby Cortez, our assistant planner, is going to provide the presentation as soon as it comes up on the screen.
And could we welcome, it's Debbie?
Gabby.
Gabby, yeah.
Gabby, G-A-B-B-Y.
Oh, Gabby, thank you so much. Welcome. Nice to have you.
And I just wanted to say welcome again, Gabby. I think I met you on your first or second day on the job. I was training in our staff building, and you were walking around, and we got to chit chat. But welcome in front of the planning commission.
Yeah, thank you. Hi. Well, thank you, Chair Roshan and Chairman Rodriguez. Hi. And good evening, planning commissioners and members of the public. This project before you tonight is a request for a coastal development permit and conditional use permit to build a new single-family home on a vacant parcel at 2285 Emerald Circle in the southern clusters of the Coyster subdivision. The application, the applicant is John Bradley, and the agent is Cody Lawrence. The site is zoned MMR, CRR, GC with a PD overlay. The lot is located within the coastal appeals jurisdiction. The project as designed meets all applicable development standards for the city zoning ordinance with the exception of the covered entry, which I'll talk more about in the future slide. This is an image of the existing 8,616 square foot parcel as seen from Emerald Circle that gives context of the site as it currently sits. This is the site plan that illustrates the proposed 2,368 square foot single-family home highlighted in green and a 560 square foot attached garage highlighted in blue with a 126 square foot rear covered patio highlighted in purple. The site plan also shows a recessed garage design to meet the standards set forth in the Coyster's design guidelines, which I will discuss more in the coming slides. The proposed project is also proposing a covered entry canopy circled in red, which encroaches three feet into the front setback. The canopy is inconsistent with the current municipal code, however, would be allowed in the 2022 zoning ordinance. In order for the proposed canopy to comply with the current code, the wooden posts would need to be moved back and outside of the front setback. I have also provided a landscape plan which shows drought tolerant plants, crushed gravel garden path, and concrete set step paths. This is a photo simulation of the proposed development that shows architectural details, color, and materials of the design. As you can see, the project is a craftsman-like style home with a white, with white board and badon siding, which complies the Coyster's design guidelines. As discussed, this project is designed to meet the requirements in the Coyster's design guidelines. The Coyster's Architectural Review Committee also wrote a letter confirming the project's compliance. For the city's approved residential design guidelines, the project is compliant regarding scale and mass. As it meets height and lock coverage requirements, the single-family home is consistent with coastal nature of the Coyster's property. The proposed home meets proportional relationship required requirements related to scale and mass. Surface articulation, the project includes visual interest and inviting entry. The project is proposing vinyl windows and a front entry canopy with exposed wood columns stained brown, which match the open trellis awning and exposed outlookers. Building orientation, like other homes in the Coysters, the entry and driveway are visible and inviting with a recessed garage door. Garage and driveway design, the dark garage door matches other colors used throughout the home exterior. The garage is also set back from the front facade by five feet. Sustainable design features, plants proposed are all low-water species. Outdoor lighting fixtures shall be pointed downward and shielded. The home is also proposing to include roof-mounted solar panels. Building materials, the proposed materials comply with the Coyster's design guidelines such as white board and badon siding as the primary material and ascent materials of brick painted white wrapped below with a dimensional asphalt shingled roof. Architectural elements, the design and architectural features are visually pleasing as well as the colors used in the exterior finish. The craftsman-style home proposes a similar look and feel to other homes in the Coyster subdivision. Landscaping, landscaping plan is compliant to the 50% required front setback landscaping standards, proposing low drought tolerant native plant species typical in the area. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation to adopt Resolution 1223, which includes an added condition, item 12. The applicant shall revise the design of the covered main entry to move the supported post out of the front setback, subject to review and approval by the Community Development Director. That concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Gabby, Gabby, thank you so much. Very well done. Questions for staff?
One question I probably should ask Gabby, but I asked Commissioner Meyer. Well, you know, I drove by there today at about 4:00, and I noticed, you know, all these beautiful homes in one lot. What was there prior? I mean, was there a demo done or, you know, I asked him, I probably should ask staff.
It was vacant. It just hasn't been built on yet.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Other questions for staff?
I have a.
Eric?
Minor questions mostly, and I'm looking at the architectural plans. Page A12 or A21, sorry, A2.1. And that shows the columns out front as being three and a half feet, three foot, three and a half inches off the face of the house. And then when I'm looking at page A10, it shows the house as being 20 feet, 10 and a half inches off the setback. And then the garage, a further, almost five feet, I guess, from there. There's, all I'm getting at is the numbers on your, your report here don't exactly add up the same as they do on the blueprints. And it's, I'm not going to make a big deal out of it, but they need to add up back and forth. It's not a big deal, but it doesn't quite add up. And what it gets down to is, at the bottom line, is that those, those two columns are two foot, like 11 inches into the setback rather than, I think currently it says 16 feet, something off the front setback. But it's, it's more like eight, it's more like 17 foot nine. So we're arguing here, if this is the point that we end up arguing about, it's going to be, or discussing.
What's approval with that condition?
We actually, we simply, in the condition, we didn't state the amount. We just said they had to move it out of the setback.
Which will cover us.
Yeah.
Got it. Other questions for Gabby? Gabby, who's here tonight from the applicant?
The agent, Cody Lawrence.
And he's, I think, attending via Zoom, so we would have to get him off of Zoom.
Oh, okay. Do they want to do a presentation?
No, but he's available for any comments or questions.
Okay. Let's go right to public comment then. Anybody want to comment on this one? Thank you, Betty.
Betty Winholtz, just curious if this also has to have an ADU or not?
That's a good question. What's the threshold?
So, do you want to answer? So, so the reason the other one did is it's entirely subject to the new zoning code. This house is not subject to the new zoning code, so the requirement is not in place.
So when the new zoning code comes in?
If you had a house over 2,500 square foot of living area, then you'd be doing an ADU or paying in lieu fees.
So there's two reasons. The code, the zoning code, which this comes under, and this isn't 2,500 feet, is it?
What's the living area on it, Gabby?
It is?
2,300 and something?
Says here 2,368.
So it's, so it's under. But they wouldn't be required to anyway because that code's not in place yet.
Right. Got it. Thank you, Betty. Anybody in the queue? Hands raised? Anthony?
Thank you, Chair Roshan. Currently, I see Terry Simons with his hand raised. I'm going to go ahead and unmute Terry.
Terry, you can't help yourself. Welcome.
Terry, if you're able to turn your volume up just a little bit, you've been just, if you're able to turn your volume up just a little bit, that would be great, please. Thank you.
I'll give that a try. Is that any better?
A little quiet.
Okay. Is that any better?
No.
No. Well, I guess hopefully I'll just talk loud and.
We'll be real quiet.
I had a similar question to Betty's, but I had presumed that it was because the building was under 2,500 square feet that the JADU was not needed. But I did want to comment about Eric's comment on the JADU on the prior one. Or maybe it wasn't, no, it wasn't Eric's, it was Joe's.
Joe.
I, I think if a building project ever justified a onsite ADU, it would be a large residence like this where it's very likely that they will have live-in staff. And that JADU that I saw in the plans seems perfectly appropriate and well-located to be like a guard gate or the butler or maid's quarters for the house as it's right ahead of the front door. So it seemed very appropriate to me. So it seemed very appropriate to me, and it's exciting to see some of these buildings coming forward now with accessory dwelling units that obviously are for support staff.
Thank you, Terry. Remember, our next commission meeting is July 5. We're going to slide it a day. I just wanted to make you put it on your calendar for us. Did I lose them? Thank you, Terry.
All right. Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue. Terry Simons just re-raised his hand, but I'm not sure what-
My fault. Hi, Terry.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and, I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, we're good. With that, I'll close public comment. Commissioners, comments? Questions? Motions?
Like to make a motion?
Before, can we discuss?
Sure.
This is one of those areas that really frustrates me, because these posts are in a nice position the way they are, and according to the next guidelines, they will work. And moving them back to the location that we're asking to move them back to is frustratingly awkward and does nothing to the scale, mass, or anything, other than make the posts in an awkward position. And is there no other alternative? Is there some other route we can take? I mean, it would be my hope that there would be a variance available for such a mundane, comical, for lack of a better word, change that decreases the architectural integrity of the house.
Commissioner Meyer, your frustration is no less than mine. We are not happy with the situation we find ourselves in, meaning not having the new zoning code certified by the Coastal Commission. We end up with weird things like this as a result of that. So you're right. The way that they would do that would be to request a variance, whoops, apparently I was talking too long. And that would be the only way for them to do it, so we'd have to go back through a public hearing process, agendize it, do the whole thing. What might be available to them, though, depending on when they move forward with the project, is perhaps we're in a position where the code is certified, and they could simply make the changes, a minor modification, and we could approve it at staff level and-
That could be done administrative.
Yeah, and that would be the best-case scenario for me. I don't like us being in this position. It's just where we find ourselves currently.
My suggestion would be even, you know, some sort of a two-part, where they could get a final occupancy minus this little structure on top, and then build the structure on top, if that was something the applicant was interested in, as a secondary permit, you know, and that second permit is completed under the new code. But then we're in the CCNRs and all that kind of stuff, and so I hesitate to suggest that, but it's just really awkward.
I would say this, I mean, we're going to work with the applicant the best way we can. I don't disagree with you. I think it is nicer the way that it's designed now than versus what we'd be making them do. I'm just, I added a condition so it would comply with the current code. I think we anticipate them moving forward with the design that you see before you, because we'll have the new code in place. That is the hope, desire.
Yeah. This is Bill. I agree, and I think a modification sounds like a great solution, so. Other comments?
No.
Motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission approve the requested coastal development permit and conditional use permit for the proposed project at 2285 Emerald. And I believe that Commissioner Meyer brought up at the beginning some details we may want to put in just for the benefit of that. We don't have to do that, but I was just-
Well, doesn't staff recommendation includes the conditional?
Number 12. So it's covered?
It includes it.
Okay, good. So that's it then. We don't need that. So I'll just make that motion then.
So Mike, you're saying you want to recommend staff's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
But I think we have to do both, right? In the past, we've had the request of conditional development permit and conditional use permit. You want us to call out both, right?
It's both, approval of the resolution.
Yeah, that way we cover.
You said it, though.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
And I'll suggest that the applicant pour two post spaces for each post, one in the right location and one in the wrong location, and just move the damn posts.
Thank you, Eric. Anybody else? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Public comments closed. What?
The applicant? Or the architect?
So is, sorry, I didn't announce myself. So I'm just wondering, is it the back and forth that we're having with the posts, is there any benefit to adding a condition that says if we submit this thing, this project, once you guys have approval of the new zoning ordinance, that we can go ahead and move forward with the design as is?
I don't know if we can do that. That sounds unusual.
Yeah, and I think you heard me say that that's what we'd be accepting of. So I don't know that we need, that's in the record. I mean, I don't, like, I said it out loud. Like, that's our intent. The commissioner, I think, Commissioner Meyer was speaking to that, and the rest of you were nodding your head. I think we're all on the same page about where we think-
But the best process is still the modification.
Minor modification, yes, as we move forward, so I think that's how.
Thanks for trying, though.
It wouldn't require coming to the planning commission, it'd just be-
Administrative.
Administrative, yeah.
Gabby, would you pull the commission?
Did we get the second?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Commissioner Ingraffia.
I didn't hear, thank you.
Eric?
It was Eric, okay.
Chairman Rodriguez?
Vice Chair, yes.
Vice Chair.
Yes.
Chairman Meyer?
Commissioner Meyer.
You did so well, I can tell.
Got her all flustered.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
And Chairman Roshan?
Yes.
Four to zero.
Great job, Gabby. Great job. First one up, you hit it out of the ballpark. Thank you.
So this is your first, but I've heard this might be your last with us.
Unfortunately, yes, she's accepted a position elsewhere, but I'm happy that we got to bring her in front of you, so she had an opportunity.
Well, we got to meet you, and we hate to lose you. You could reconsider. Thank you so much. Commissioners, new business? Oh, I'm going to talk about that under future agenda items, yeah. But new business, do we need to bring that up with the ADU thing?
Yeah, and the reason I wanted to add on to what you're talking about is I've noticed in town there are a number of multifamily units that are being converted into single-family units. Like, they're taking a threeplex or a fourplex and rebuilding that into a single, large home. And I just think that that, some discussion around that subject might be appropriate at the same time as the discussion as the junior ADU versus dollars discussion that you were talking about.
I'm not sure I understand. How does that fit, Scott?
I mean, you-
The idea is that we're, I think Joe is referring to the fact that, I think, I think, and I don't want to, we're not agendized, we shouldn't be discussing this. I don't think I really-
We're not discussing. We're discussing how to agendize it.
Yeah, like, what is it I would put on? So you can talk about it to get your point across, so we understand what you're thinking, so we get a concurrence.
Trying to maintain affordable housing essentially is my interest. Trying to create and maintain affordable housing. And so whether that is through the addition of a junior ADU as opposed to a fake bedroom designed as a junior ADU, I think is what might have been the discussion, or versus dollars being given out. And my worry was we're losing housing. We're losing units, but I don't know what the, I don't know what the word, agglomation is a word for it that I don't remember. Aggregation of multi-units into a single unit.
We're not having that situation. That's not something that we-
I don't think you've seen it yet. I think it's coming.
Okay, we don't, I mean, okay, we don't-
We can, it sounds a little bit, you know how like the, when condos was a big fad, they'd take an apartment building and condoize it? It's kind of a discussion along those lines. It has legal implications as well.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't even had anybody even ask us about stuff like that, so, I mean, I don't, I mean, I guess we can certainly agendize it if you guys want to talk about it.
Why don't we just add it? And, you know, if it doesn't go anywhere, it doesn't go anywhere. Okay, other new business?
So do we, is it two-pronged, right? Is it the, we doing the ADU versus the in lieu fee payment for the new code policies? And then the item that Commissioner Meyer brought up, related to the, I guess, combining units potentially?
We could make it two separate topics, yeah.
I don't mind. If you want, I can bring them together, or I can do it separately. It's up to you.
Let's make them separate.
Okay.
Do we have unfinished business?
Can I bring something?
Sure. Do you want to do it in future agenda items, or?
No, unfinished. Well, I think these are, we've already discussed them, but I'm just trying to get back to them, which would be the objective design standards, right? That's unfinished business that will be coming up on a future agenda item.
We're bringing those back in July.
Okay, good. The reason I ask is because the commission had asked for information that it could use to do its homework and its work in trying to put together comments for our, and we haven't received anything, so.
We're in the process of putting that together. And I know, and Nancy was, oh, did you guys receive it? I know it was getting ready to be sent to you guys, so it sounds like you have it now.
Yeah, and the only reason I ask is because my deadline was June 27. Therefore, I have one week to do my job. Is that still a deadline? You gave us June 27.
Would like to have your comments back by then, so we can digest it for the staff report. If it takes longer than that, it's-
And there is a deadline in September, right, in terms of funding, I think?
That's just when our grant runs out, so we have to have this done by then. Otherwise, it's goodbye consultant and city staffs working on it, which is kind of a nightmare for me.
So then we lose, we just, staff is gone, or the consultant.
The consultant's gone, and then it's just us doing it, which-
So I would just reiterate that we need to get our comments to Scott by, one week from now, by June 27, which is one week from today. We should have our comments into staff regarding this. Okay, and the other thing is the community benefits, you know, item. You know, it's been out there. I don't know where it is, if it's floating.
I'm in the process of putting the staff report together. The public member of the committee, Sean Green, had taken a shot at condensing it, and I'm working on taking that into a format that I can bring in front of the commission.
Can you give us a rough idea?
I'm not sure which meeting it's going to have. I have to, I have to look at the meeting agendas.
And there's no deadline for that, but-
I need to bring it forward. It's just we've had other things going on, so.
We don't want to let it, you know, disappear, though, so.
Yeah, that's why I brought those two things up. Thank you.
It'll probably, based on where we're at now, be coming back either in the, well, taking time off. So it probably won't be until the first meeting in August.
So under future agenda items, I'm very excited. Get to say that our July 4 meeting, nobody wanted to come on the holiday, so we're going to do it on the 5th, so I'm hoping some folks are in town. The excitement is we're going to do it at Eric's Elementary School here in Morro Bay. In the school auditorium, we're going to hold the meeting. And it's very, very interesting, because it's going to be the conclusion of our historic information effort. We will be inviting all the previous panelists who spoke to us about history, inviting city council, and we've invited a local treasurer, James Pap, PhD, architectural historian out of Slow. So we'll be very excited to hear from him. We're going to have a reception before the meeting on the 5th. Joe is going to bring the lemonade. I committed to cookies. Yeah, I did. And Eric has committed to doing tours of his elementary school.
And I will do something.
Okay.
Just to be clear, this is the old elementary in Morro Bay on Monterey Street, which is a Spanish colonial revival building, not the Delmar Elementary.
There's two incredible buildings on the site. One is 1950's Frank Wincoop, the Butterfly Building, which is a super interesting piece of modernism. And then the 1930's building is Louis Crawford, complete with incredible, you know, Julia Morgan-type details. So James Pap will be talking about that, and we'll have all the folks who have been here before will be invited, and so hopefully some of them will be there as well.
What time is it starting?
What time?
So I guess we're going to start at 5.
Yeah, reception will be at 5, and the meeting will start at its normal time at 6 o'clock.
Yeah, and we just walked the building again, and it really is a gem. It's really sweet. So very excited about that. Other future agenda items?
Or comment? I have one comment.
Please.
And this may be timely, only because the benefit of coming back and forth and driving the lot is that I listen to a lot of stuff that I can learn regarding planning. But today I listened to somebody present his book on The Good Ancestor, which means whatever you leave, your children, your children's children should benefit from what you're doing today. So that would be a book that I would like to put on our book club. It's called The Good Ancestor. So, you know, we do have a book club, but I think this is all running together because you're trying to save history, Bill, there, you know, with the school. But it will be a great book. It's going to be a great read. The Native Americans used to plan seven generations ahead of themselves.
Well, we'll have to run that by Asia, our book club chair.
That's just something I'd like to read, so if I'm going to read it, I might as well get credit for it.
And I don't know if we've ever done this, like dedicate a meeting to somebody, but we could dedicate this to the new baby, you know, I'm kind of excited, yeah.
You're right on.
I hope you're listening, Asia. That's for you. I don't see her, but, yeah. We'll make sure she hears. Lovely. Anything else, or can we close the meeting?
That's it.
Okay, thanks. We are adjourned.